Hey, good evening. We're going to get started. Welcome to the April Hoboken Board of Education Meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. Proper and public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 8, 2022. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Simon. Mr. Kieran.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a quarrel.
At this time, I would like to turn our meeting over to Mr. Bartlett, Principal of Brand Elementary School, to begin the recognition portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Angley. On behalf of Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, I'd like to welcome our board members, staff, parents, guardians, and most importantly, our students to tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to begin our recognition and celebration this evening. This is always one of the best moments each month, where our students are honored for their hard work, commitment, and leadership. We'll start with the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month, followed by Vice Principal Sorafin, representing Connors, Principal Shannon for Wallace, Principal Mara for Hoboken Middle School, and Principal Pickete-Pietra for Hoboken High School. At this time, it is my honor and pleasure to welcome Mr. Jacob Figueroa to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Jacob Figueroa, the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for March 2022. Jacob was nominated by Mrs. Tainter, his third-grade teacher. Mrs. Tainter said, "Jacob Figueroa is one of the most motivated students I've ever had the pleasure of teaching. He is always smiling, kind, friendly, and one of the hardest-working students I've met. His work ethic is not only noticed by his teachers, but is seen by all of his peers. Jacob is a math wizard. He was one of the first students in our class to know all of his multiplication facts. Jacob can take over the math teacher table conversation and ask questions during math talks that allow his peers to improve their own mathematical thinking. Jacob enjoys math, likes sharing his knowledge with others, is a critical thinker, and learns by doing. When Jacob entered third grade, he was shy and quiet about reading, at times hesitant to begin language arts. Jacob wanted to improve his reading and writing skills, so each day, he works to improve just that. He continues to work one-on-one with his teachers, at home with his parents, and with his peers in class. Jacob has never once gotten upset or frustrated, even when the work can challenge him. He always embraces a challenge with a positive attitude and continues to put his best foot forward. Through his hard work and dedication, Jacob has improved several levels on his developmental reading assessment. He continues to earn honor roll grades in math, science, and social studies every marking period. In addition to his stellar commitment to his academics, Jacob is a caring and compassionate friend to his peers. He always includes everyone during recess games. During Move This World, he'll reach out and make an effort to include someone who is shy. He asks different students to read with him during language arts. Jacob is a wonderful student leader in class, does an excellent job leading morning meetings as the hallway leader, and as a charismatic, math-centered group-work leader. Jacob was nominated as well by former Students of the Month Sophia and Connor. They were very clear that Jacob was the student who should receive this award. Sophia nominated him by saying, quote, "Jacob is always doing his work and helping others. He really deserves Student of the Month." Jacob always is quick to have a conversation with me as the principal when I make my rounds and see him throughout the school. I was really impressed with his work ethic when I dropped in to give Mrs. Tainter a formal observation. He did such a marvelous job explaining what he was working on during his independent practice time and showed great leadership skills when he explained how the processes work within the classroom to foster student independence. Jacob likes to play football and basketball. In fact, he enjoys all sports and is very athletic. Jacob's favorite classes are physical education and math. He loves listening to pop music. Michael Jackson is his favorite artist. After school, Jacob likes to ride his skateboard and play video games. Jacob's favorite game is Wii Sports. I will totally beat you in Wii Baseball. When Jacob grows up, he wants to be a basketball player or a football player and is also interested in being a police officer because, quote, "It's good money." Jacob said, "I like running and think it would be fun to drive a police car around if I was a cop." When asked about college, Jacob said he would like to play for Richmond because it's a good college, or Tennessee because he loved learning about Tennessee during their March Madness College Research Project. When told he earned this honor, Jacob said, "It feels good because this was my first time ever getting Student of the Month. I'm really proud of myself because I've been working really hard, and we are proud of you too, Jacob." Congratulations to Jacob Figueroa, the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for March 2022. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium Vice Principal Sorafin from Connors Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. At this time, I would like to invite Kayla Havens up to the podium. Congratulations to Kayla Havens, who was nominated to Student of the Month by her second-grade teacher, Ms. Rinaldi. Ms. Rinaldi shared, "I am so proud of this young lady. Kayla is the definition of a role model to all her peers. She always does the right thing inside and outside of class. Kayla treats others with respect on a daily basis. She asks how people are doing if they look like they're sad, and she tries to make everyone feel better. Kayla is always helpful and conscientious of all her classmates' thoughts and feelings. She is such an honest and reliable person, both to her classmates and teachers. I can always trust Kayla to do the right thing wherever she may be. Kayla is such a responsible second grader, and I can always count on her. She always tries her best in everything that she does. Kayla has grown tremendously this school year due to her dedication and hard work. She is not afraid to ask questions and get clarification on any topic. She is very eager to learn and always participates during class discussions and group work. Kayla is such a compassionate and caring citizen. She is always willing to lend a helping hand to her classmates and to myself. I can always count on Kayla to run an errand for me or help me with tasks around the classroom. Whenever a classroom cleanup task needs to be done, I can find Kayla helping out a friend, pushing in a chair, or even picking up a pencil for her friends. I feel so blessed to have the opportunity to teach this incredible young lady, and I can't wait to see all that she is able to accomplish in years to come." Mr. Ozardo shared, "Kayla is truly a star in music class. She receives straight A's in all of the music theory activities and is so helpful to all her classmates..." when we have peer learning time, sorry. "All her passion for singing songs... Her passion for singing shines every time the class sings all their favorite songs. With her big smile and love of music, it is an honor to be working with her every week. Congratulations, Kayla, on receiving Student of the Month. I am so proud of you. Sincerely, Mr. Ozardo." When we asked Kayla to tell us a little bit about herself and this honor, Kayla shared that her favorite color is pink because it reminds her of summer. Like that dress, right? Nice. She loves how there are different shades of pink, and her absolute favorite shade of pink is bunny-nose pink. Kayla's favorite subject in school is math because she says she gets to learn different things. She enjoys practicing math at home. She wanted to share that she is very happy that she got Student of the Month and that she has an amazing teacher. She wants people to know that she loves her sister Ellie very much, who was in kindergarten at Connors. Kayla says her parents love her very much, they are very smart, and she thinks they are amazing parents. Since Kayla is such a great friend to her peers, it is not surprising that they had such nice things to say about her. Kayla's friend Emily shared that Kayla is very responsible. She always takes care of her things and never loses them. She knows how to control her body when we're at recess and is very calm. She's just a great friend. Mina says, "I think Kayla is respectful and caring. She usually helps me if I get hurt at recess or gym. She always follows directions. Kayla is very kind." Benjamin adds, "I think Kayla shows respect. When we work together, she respects the games and activities that I pick out. She also doesn't argue or fight. Kayla is such a nice friend." Luke has shared, "I think Kayla is respectful, responsible, and fair. I think she's caring because when I feel bad, she asks if I'm okay and tries to help however she can. Kayla always does her work and helps out anyone who needs it. She's a great friend." We are so proud of Kayla for being nominated as the Thomas J. Connors Elementary School Student of the Month. Kayla is very deserving of this honor, and she embodies what it means to be a Connors Koala. She is not only a great student, but she also is a young leader in our school community by providing daily examples of our six pillars of character. It is truly my pleasure to read such wonderful things about Kayla. She is so deserving of this award. Kayla, the effect you have on our school community is something you and your family should be very proud of. Congratulations, Kayla. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Shannon up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Sorafin. At this time, I'd like to call Samuel Medina to the podium. We are here tonight to celebrate Samuel Medina, our Wallace Student of the Month for March 2022. Sam is a fifth-grade scholar at Wallace Elementary School and was nominated by Ms. Reinauer. Ms. Reinauer said, "Sam has made so much progress this school year. He comes to school happy and ready to learn every day. He is always positive about being in class. He has learned the names of all of his teachers he sees regularly throughout the building and engages in pleasant conversations with them whenever he sees them. He is a great friend and always tries to help cheer up his peers when they are upset. He is always willing to be the teacher's helper and to assist his friends with work when they are in need. Sam works very hard academically. He completes all homework assignments and works diligently on his classwork throughout the day. Sam works well with all students in the classroom during group activities. He excels in spelling and grammar. He has made excellent progress in reading comprehension as well. Sam is also amazing at math and has worked very hard on his division and multiplication word problems and money math. He never gives up when something is difficult and always tries his best. Sam loves reading comics and drawing with his friends. He enjoys our weekly reading time when we read books aloud to the PSD classrooms and does a great job reading to the younger students. He is very excited to transition to the middle school next year and talks about it often. He said he wants to be a vet when he grows up because he loves to take care of animals and loves cats best, like his pet marshmallow." That's right. Here are some of the things that his teachers have said about him. Ms. Sanchez said, "Samuel Medina is one of the most amazing students I know. Loves to come to science with a warm smile, kind words, and a great mood. Works on his assignments and participates in class, and he is a joy to work with. Congratulations and keep up the good work." Ms. Dawn added, "Sam is kind all the time and has come so far. He is respectful and polite. He always greets everyone with a smile on his face. He is a joy to have in class." Ms. Ferrara also shared, "There is no one more deserving of this amazing recognition. Sammy Sam, I am so proud of you for all that you do. Keep shining." Here are a few things that his friends asked me to let him know. They are always appreciative of his high fives when they do something great. They also love that he helps his friends every day and always has a great time while doing it. And lastly, he likes to talk with his friends and he likes to play tag at recess with them. Samuel embodies everything that Wallace Elementary represents and is the ideal candidate for this honor. We are all very proud of you, Sam. Congratulations on this recognition. It is well deserved. Let's hear it for Sam Medina, our March 2022 Wallace School Student of the Month. Thank you. Next, I would like to introduce Principal Mara of the Hoboken Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. It is my pleasure to introduce Idan Rigav, the Hoboken Middle School, March 22, Overall Student of the Month. Nominated by several of his teachers, Idan is described as a respectful, hard-working student and as the epitome of a model student. Idan walks into the building each day and greets everyone with a good morning and a smile that is absolutely infectious. It makes me so happy to see your face each and every day. When Idan found out that he was Student of the Month for the entire middle school, he was surprised. According to Idan, he knew the middle school was great, but he didn't know how great it was, and it's only his first year here. He is truly honored to be named Overall Student of the Month. He feels that he has become a much better student this year and is extremely proud of himself. We are very proud of you, too. Idan was nominated by several of his teachers for his achievements so far this year. Mr. D. Benedetto shared that you are a major contributor to class discussions with thoughtful and insightful points. Ms. Bruce shared, "From the day she met you, she knew you were going to be a positive influence in her classroom. Idan has a wonderful spirit, an energetic attitude towards learning, and is a great friend to his peers. It's been a pleasure to watch you grow and mature over the course of the year. Middle school can be a challenging transition, and Idan has navigated that transition so well. Idan is very close with his family. Mom, Dad, his two sisters, Amit, who is four, and Tavel, a fifth-grader at Brand, who will be joining us at the middle school next year. And all the way from Israel, Idan's grandmother is here tonight as well. Idan really enjoys having dinner with his family every night and talking about the day's events, sharing stories or even telling jokes. His family loves to take road trips, and he secretly hopes that we get a dog soon. Idan's favorite subjects in school are math and social studies. He really likes math. He also enjoys social studies because they have debates and learn about new topics. Idan is quite the history buff. Both in and out of school, he loves learning about history, watching videos, and learning everything he can. He also participates in coding classes through an online school in India. He creates code for Minecraft and even has his own server to house his creations. Idan is a part of our Hoboken Middle School Best Buddy Program and has served as a middle school buddy for our upcoming fifth-grade students with their tours and activities, as well as welcoming families to our middle school open house. His closest friend is Yuval because he always helps Idan when he needs it. They talk together at lunch and laugh at things they find funny in games and other interesting topics. Idan is not sure where he wants to go to college yet. Right now, he is way too busy getting his good grades in middle school and feels that if he does that, then his opportunity will literally come knocking at his door. Maybe a career in business, but he really isn't sure yet. Idan, we are very proud of you. Please join me in congratulating our March 2022 Overall Student of the Month. Keep up the great work.
I would now like to introduce Ms. Pickete-Pietra, Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome Michael Newman Pelto, our March Student of the Month. I have had the pleasure of getting to know Michael over the past four years, but honestly, only really getting to know him this year. What I have learned is that Michael is a serious student who cares deeply about the world around him. Since freshman year, Michael has put his efforts into his academics, challenging himself with advanced placement courses throughout all four years. He excelled and proudly boasts a GPA of 4.18. I'm going to share what a few of his teachers had to say about Michael. "I had the pleasure of teaching Michael last year in my Holocaust Genocide in Modern Humanity class. If Michael sees an injustice, someone who needs help, he is always the first one to volunteer. He truly takes what he learned in school and utilizes it in his own life. Lately, he is deeply passionate about the situation in Ukraine and has talked about it with his classmates. He is the type of student who refuses to be part of the problem, but always tries to find the solution. He is optimistic, diligent, and extremely inquisitive, and will inquire about and research what is unfamiliar to him. His contributions to class discussions and the teach-and-learn process overall are greatly appreciated." Michael is the kindest student that likes to face a concept head-on when he doesn't understand it. For example, in AP US Government, whenever dealing with a new Supreme Court case, he is always ready to hit me with a barrage of questions, all in an effort to build up his knowledge of not only the court case, but the laws and the individuals that also revolve around it. While his work can appear minimal, he clearly puts time and effort into conveying his responses in a very clear and concise manner. He is a consistently active student in class discussion. Mr. McCauley states he's an active participant in media production. As you can see, he came from the balcony. "And he feels very at home behind the camera." Mr. McCauley shared he is a young man who is ambitious and focused on the task at hand. He doesn't have a lot of respect for baloney when it is presented, but will respectfully address it and try to replace it with facts. This is a kind way to explain that Michael is a very real and honest young man. All of his teachers are right on. Michael is direct, honest, and is confident. He has come to me over the course of the year with a couple of thoughts, and we've had conversations sometimes in the hallway. And what I appreciated most, whether I was agreeing or disagreeing with him, he was actively engaged in the conversation. His ears were open, and he listened to another perspective. It didn't matter if he agreed and I agreed. It was a mature conversation. Last week, we shared a seat on the bus ride home from Hamilton, and our conversation was about what shows we were enjoying on Netflix. Did he like video games, and which ones were his favorites, favorite movies, etc.? I have promised Michael over our spring break I will watch Peaky Blinders with subtitles. It was an enjoyable, enjoyable hour for me with Michael. I asked Michael a few questions, and this is what he shared with me. Favorite thing, favorite time at Hoboken High School? Mr. Tees, Mr. Taraskowitz, AP US History. In his downtime, he enjoys exercise, playing basketball, and walking his dogs. His friends would say he is determined and hard-working, and his advice to freshmen would, and I think to most people, would be to do it as soon as possible because it's always better than leaving it until the day, the last day. Michael will not be going very far next year as he will be attending Stevens University in the fall. Best of luck to Michael, and thank you for being just an all-around great Red Wing. Congratulations. At this time, I was asked to call up Kendall McDonough, our Hoboken High School Student Government Representative for our March Report.
Hello, my name is Kendall McDonough, and I am the Hoboken High School Student Government School Board Representative, and it is an honor to speak to you this evening. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Student Activities Office has had a productive and busy month. This past month, with a successful morning announcements program, participation in the Wallace Faculty Basketball Game, Wallace School Week of the Young Child, bake sale, class council meetings, Read Across America program, organizational meetings, successful food drive, New York Rugby Ticket Giveaway, pediatric cancer fundraiser, and humanitarian fundraiser for Ukraine. That was a joint venture with the National Honor Society and Spanish National Honor Society. Our faculty and student versus students basketball game is scheduled for Tuesday, April 26, 2022, at the Hoboken High School Gymnasium. The cost is $5 for adults and $3 for students. Fourth Annual Powderpuff Game. The Fourth Annual Powderpuff Game was postponed due to inclement weather in March and has been scheduled for Friday, April 29 at 6:00 p.m. The cost is also $5 for adults and $3 for students. Pancakes for Prom. The Class of 2022 is holding a Pancakes for Prom Breakfast on Saturday, April 30 from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. in the Hoboken High School cafeteria. It is $10 for adults and $5 for students. Come down and enjoy some pancakes in support of the senior class. Environmental Science Club. On March 26, the Hoboken High School won first prize in the NJSTEM Communities Challenge. The winning team named HO2-Boken with Rowan Ellison, Zoe Magletta, Ian Cressby, and Jacob Linder focused on their STEM solution on both increasing the amount of green space in Hoboken and finding means to absorb water to help prevent flooding caused by global climate change related to storm events. Out of 100... Nope, I'm so sorry. On Saturday, April 2, the Hoboken High School Environmental Science Club participated in cleanup of the shoreline at Hoboken High School Cove on nearby Maxwell and Allegiant Parks. The cleanup was hosted by Clean New Jersey. This is the second cleanup that the club has participated in this year. The team was managed to fill five Home Depot buckets collected with garbage. We were very happy to give back to the community and had a great time. Band. On March 16, the middle school band traveled to Rowan University for the NJMEA Concert Band Festival, performing alongside some of the best bands in the state. The band scored a 92.5 and a superior rating. The following week, advanced members of the marching band were treated to a masterclass at NJCU, receiving lessons from professors and performing college-level... at NJCU, receiving lessons from professors and performing college-level students along with university students. Thespians Competition Team. Montclair State University Theater Night Foxy Award nominations. The Montclair State University Foxy Theater Night Awards recognizes the excellence in theater productions throughout NJ. The awards honor accomplishments of individual achievement of both students and educators in areas of performance, direction, design, and technical theater, and in overall outstanding productions. It provides our NJ Thespians and theater educators with the opportunity to observe and learn from the high standards, extraordinary creativity, and risk-taking artistic choices made by outstanding theater educators for those students. Out of 100 entries, adjudicators selected the top five choices in each category. It is a huge honor to be nominated. We look forward to the award ceremony that will be held virtually on May 24. The production of 12 Angry Jurors and Teen received the following nominations. Outstanding Achievement in 12 Angry Jurors, Derek Kinnear. Outstanding Achievement in Acting Assemble of Period Dramatic Play 12 Angry Jurors and One Act Play Teen. And we would like to congratulate Derek Kinnear, Gina Rotandi, Ayesha Taipa, Arcadio Torres, Shay Worskowski, Kendall McDonough, Mabel Wischke-Villa-Vasencio, Naomi Cook, Haley Benway, Anthony Barahona, Reedy Demani, Miguel Kablein, Rosie Kablein, Zion Taylor, Genevieve Fink, Mara Reba, Mary Claire McGreevy, and Daniel Weintraub. Additionally, Outstanding Performance by an Actor in a One Act Play Teen, Daniel Weintraub, and Outstanding Performance by an Actress in a One Act Teen Play, Rosie Kablein. And lastly, Outstanding Production of a One Act Teen Play, Derek Kinnear and Brittany Schufer. National Honor Society. In addition to working on individual service hours, students in the National Honor Society partnered with the Student Government and Spanish National Honor Society to make blue and yellow ribbon pins to show our support for Ukraine. The pins were given to students who donated on April 8 Dress Down, which earned just over $400 that will be donated to UNICEF. Additionally, the National Honor Society has set aside two dates to make sandwiches for the Hoboken Shelter. We are supported in this by Chef Nelson and culinary students who baked the bread and supplied meat and ingredients. Our selection process for new members has just begun. Thirty-one sophomores and juniors have turned in all necessary documents that will be interviewed and will be interviewed by the Faculty Council in May. Yearbook Club. The yearbook staff are pushing themselves as deadlines looms. We are tracking down final baby pictures, student answers to student polls, and photographing spring sports. The process has been quite a learning experience for all club members. Debate Program. During the first in-person conference of the year, Hoboken High School's debate program wins 18 individual awards and overall best delegation at 2022 St. Peter's Model United Nations Debate Competition. All the participants worked with students from across New Jersey to address global issues like the invasion of Ukraine and global warming. Every student engaged in discussion and diplomacy and proposed ideas to improve the lives of people. Special recognition goes to the following. Jayla Dale and Paz Delatorre won Most Improved Delegate. Sheila Lamb and Abigail Scott, who won Best Delegate Honorable Mention for their work on the Commission of the Status of Woman. Gina Cruz and Juliette Hyson won Best Delegate Honorable Mention for their work on UN Industrial Development. Zoe Magaletta and Camillus Juarez won Best Delegate Honorable Mention in the WHO Committee. Aiden Benicourt and Kobe Kruegel won Best Delegates for their work on the UNESCO Committee. Julia Kritz and Sage Gertman won Best Delegates for their work on the UN Industrial Development. Daniel Weintraub and Kendall McDonough won Best Delegates for their work in the UN Environmental Assembly. Franny Michaels and Genevieve Fink won Best Delegates in their work in the United Nations Security Council. Best School Delegation went to Hoboken High School for their outstanding performance and discourse and diplomacy. Hoboken High School excels at 2022 Rutgers Model Congress Debate Conference. We would like to congratulate the Hoboken High School Debate Program for their participation in Rutgers Model Conference this weekend. The RMC hosts schools from across New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York in one of the Northeast's most premier government simulation competitions. All the participants worked with Rutgers students and their peers to address issues of inequality. Many of our Red Wings were first-time participants and all excelled and came back with multiple awards as well. Additionally, the Hoboken High School Debate Team excelled at the Harvard Model Congress Madrid Debate Conference. We would like to congratulate the team for their outstanding performance at HMCE Virtual Conference hosted in Madrid, Spain. They all worked with students from top schools around the world as they participated in this international conference. They authored and debated legislation on many topics and issues. And finally, to round out this report, our monthly luncheon with the Hoboken High School Administration will be held on Tuesday, April 26 at 12:45 p.m. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, and we look forward to seeing you at our event. Go Red Wings!
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. It's always wonderful hearing everything that's going on at Hoboken High School. I also want to congratulate all of our students who were recognized tonight. Keep up the great work, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for each of you. Tonight, we will not have a superintendent's report. Unfortunately, Dr. Johnson and Ms. Rodriguez-Gomez are out of the district ill, so we wish them both a speedy recovery. But we will take just a one-minute quick break in case any families would like to leave, and then we'll continue on into our committee reports. Okay, we're going to get started, and we will start off tonight with committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrator's Report tonight?
No, it's the agenda.
Okay. Then we will go to Facilities. Ms. McGurk.
Yes. Good evening. There are two items on the agenda this evening that pertain to facilities, and we recommend both for approval. The first is the monthly safety drills, and the second is facilities requests, and I'd like to just go through those rather quickly. One notable addition, Rugby New York, which is using JFK Stadium on selected Sundays, will now be adding seven dates where they are going to be using the field for two hours on Saturday mornings for practice. Also of note, we have both Hive Athletic with coed kickball, which will be taking place from May through August from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and ZOG Sports, which is going to have adult soccer and football leagues that will be taking place on Wednesdays and Sundays in July and August. Hoboken Catholic Academy will be hosting their Field Day at JFK Stadium at the end of May. St. Anne's Catholic Church will be hosting a kickball game at JFK Stadium at the end of the month. And then most notably, two upcoming events that are going to make use of Board of Education facilities both relate to the Hoboken Family Alliance. The first is their Bike Camp, which takes place every single year. They are the local host for this national program, which helps special needs individuals learn to ride a two-wheeled bicycle, and that will be taking place in late June at the Hoboken High School Gym and JFK Stadium. And the Hoboken Family Alliance is also, and we really celebrate this, there will be a return to their swim program, which has been off, obviously, since the COVID-19 pandemic. That will begin taking place, and again, this is a swim program for special needs individuals and students, that will be taking place at the Hoboken High School Pool on Saturdays beginning at the middle of this month, and we provide both of those at no cost to the Hoboken Family Alliance. And that's all that I have for Facilities.
Thank you. Let's see. Finance. Mr. Delatorre, do you have, I think you just said your...
No items for more. We discussed everything. Everything is already recommended. All for approval.
Okay, thank you. Governance. Ms. Kirian.
So we are recommending all agenda items for approval this evening. One, two items I wanted to just point out are 9.01 and 9.02. We have a few retirements that have recently come in. I want to congratulate all three on their upcoming retirement, wish them all the best of luck in life and in their new adventures, and thank them very much for their years of service to the district. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And Wellness. Ms. Delara.
No, I don't have any items on the agenda tonight for approval.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few things to report out on tonight. The first being, over the past few weeks, there have been articles and news segments about New Jersey's new health curriculum. While we have not received many inquiries about this topic, I'd like to provide some basic information. First, New Jersey school districts, including the Hoboken Public School District, are using the 2014 Health and Physical Education Standards as the foundation of curriculum in the content area. The New Jersey Department of Education adopted new standards for health and physical education in 2020 that are not required to be implemented until September 2022. As we move into the summer months and start our curriculum work, we will revise our health and physical education curriculum accordingly. As always, we will design developmentally age-appropriate curriculum that all families will have the ability to review online prior to the start of the school year. Just as we have done regarding the upcoming Spring Family Life and Wellness Night for students in grades five through seven, we will involve parents by sharing all of the content ahead of time, collect feedback, include an opt-out provision, and supply resources for parents who wish to work with their children separately. If anyone would like to view the 2020 Health and Physical Education Standards, you may do so with a simple Google search for Comprehensive Health and Physical Education NJ SLS 2020. Let's see. Next, as we discussed at our last board meeting, the budget hearing will take place on May 3 at 7:00 p.m. And lastly, the board put out a press release yesterday with regard to the survey results with respect to the referendum for the financing of a new high school and plans moving forward. Ms. Katamatory will share the press release with all of you.
Good evening. The Hoboken Board of Education recently invited the public to complete a community feedback survey with respect to the recent referendum for the financing of a new Hoboken High School. The survey was open for approximately one month between February and March 2022. Almost 1,200 people filled out the survey, and the board thanks them for their time and input. The board is continuing to review the results in greater detail. From the initial review, the board has gleaned a few themes that were prevalent across the survey responses. Those themes include commentary on the proposed cost of the project, questions about the necessity of the project, and feedback concerns around the public amenities that were included in the project. Many respondents also said there are specific aspects of the existing long-range facilities plan, including the proposed new high school, on which they would like more information. The survey yielded feedback from residents in all six floors. The board recognizes the public's concern with the overall cost and the desire of the city's taxpayers to reduce their overall tax exposure. A project of this type, especially when coupled with the lack of infrastructure investment in our schools for over 50 years, is by its nature an expensive undertaking. The board's genuine intent was to deliver to the Hoboken community 21st-century facilities to meet the needs of our 21st-century learners. That being said, the board and administration will explore various options to reduce and defray the overall cost of a much-needed new school. The board has gained important insights throughout the process. While many have inquired about a future referendum date or new plan, a crucial takeaway from the January referendum is that better communication and engagement with the community is essential before the next proposal can take shape. The board has already begun reaching out to community members and will begin to host roundtable discussions to engage residents and spark conversations about what Hoboken taxpayers would like to see in a new building, ideas surrounding cost reduction, and facts about the district as a whole. What will inspire these conversations, engagement, and ultimately, another project, is the Hoboken student body. The board is proud of their achievements and the tireless work of the district's teachers, administrators, and staff. The demographic and enrollment data presented to the community in conjunction with the referendum is factual. Enrollment is growing, and the need for increased middle school space, a new high school to house innovative and future readiness programs, and additional elementary school space is very real. The board hopes that the majority of the city's residents will be able to engage and participate in these conversations. The board also recognizes that Hoboken is a city filled with citizens that have multiple demands on their time. If you have a question regarding the Hoboken Public School District, please reach out to the board directly at hobokenboe@hoboken.k12 nj.us. The Hoboken Board of Education looks forward to hearing from you, working with you, and putting a plan together that the community will support.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all for me. Next, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items.
Edward Reed. Edward Reed, I'm on a lease at 732 Willow Avenue. Just to confirm, is the health curriculum considered an agenda item or a non-agenda item?
It is not agenda item.
I've also signed up for non-agenda. That's totally okay. In that case, as far as the agenda item, I would just like to...
I just want to remind everybody that you'll get five minutes, and you'll get a 30-second warning before the end of the five minutes.
I appreciate that. Good, yeah. No, perfect. Okay, so I've also signed up for agenda, I've also signed up for non-agenda, so I'll speak about that issue on the non-agenda side. As far as the agenda side, I'd just like to praise the Hoboken School Board for what they're doing setting up a Hoboken, a play and a show through the Hoboken School Theater Program. I think that's wonderful, and the reason I think it's wonderful in large part is because, at least as far as I understand, the school theater through the Hoboken Public School District does not require masks, unlike some private theaters in town that I think I've read do require masks for the audience. So I praise the wisdom and morality of the school board for continuing to keep masks optional, and I hope that any private theaters in town that require masks go out of business and everyone just sees the plays of the Hoboken School District. Thank you for your wisdom and morality.
Thank you.
Kevin Davis? All right, what's on here? And Favell's? No. One says agenda, one says general public. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to consent agenda. Oh, yes, Mr. Flutbal.
We have two additional resolutions that I need to read to the board to be added to the consent agenda. These are the result of a hearing that a board committee, a committee had earlier this evening.
Okay, please proceed.
So if you'll bear with me, I have two agendas I need to read into the record. And because they involve confidentiality, I'm using the resolutions which are drafted by, embedded by our board attorney. We are using student identification numbers rather than names or any other ways. Whereas Student 808720 was found by the administration of Hoboken Middle School to have violated the student code of conduct by fighting and willfully endangering the safety of others. And whereas any requisite manifestation determination was conducted, and whereas the parent or parents of Student 808720 was put on written notice of a hearing before a board committee where they would have an opportunity to be heard as to the administration's determination and recommended discipline, and whereas the superintendent of schools recommended a lengthy suspension, now therefore be it resolved that Student 808720 be and hereby is suspended until the end of the 2021-2022 school year, subject to reentry requirements to be established by the superintendent of schools, and be it further resolved that Student 808720 is to be provided with home instruction as provided by law, and be it further resolved that during the length of the suspension, Student 808720 is not permitted on the grounds of any school or facility operated by the board. The second resolution is identical except for the change of student ID. Whereas Student 808416 was found by the administration of Hoboken Middle Schools to have violated the student code of conduct by fighting and willfully endangering the safety of others, and whereas any requisite manifestation determination was conducted, and whereas the parents of Student 808416 was put on written notice of a hearing before a board committee where they would have an opportunity to be heard as to the administration's determination and recommended discipline, and whereas the superintendent of schools recommended a lengthy suspension, now fore there be it resolved that Student 808416 be and hereby is suspended until the end of the 2021-2022 school year. be and hereby is suspended until the end of the 2021-2022 school year, subject to re-entry requirements to be established by the superintendent of schools; and be it further resolved that Student 808416 is to be provided with home instruction as provided by law; and be it further resolved that during the length of the suspension, Student 808416 is not permitted on the grounds of any school or facility operated by the board.
Thank you. So now we'll start over, moving on to consent agenda.
Who did the motion? And who did the second?
Second.
Yes, Paul. Just for your benefit, Madam Secretary, the resolutions can be provided, so you have them for the record. And I think the record should also reflect that those resolutions are submitted to the board by the unanimous recommendation of the three-member committee that convened prior to this meeting.
Ready for motion?
Yes, please.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Deliara?
Yes, on everything, I need to abstain on 9.16.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Sekarian?
Yes.
Ms. Anglin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and both non-agenda items.
Mr. Reep?
Okay, and this will be addressing the health curriculum, which, as you may know, has had a controversial reception in the... You know, actually the...
Before you begin, just please state your name and municipality of residence.
Oh, my apologies. You're right. My name is Edward Reep, and I have a lease at 732 Willow Avenue in Hoboken, New Jersey. I still technically, on my driver's license, have my mom's house in Fairwood, New Jersey. Okay. So, I would like to speak on the health curriculum, which I'm sure you've heard about in... It's actually gone all the way up to the national media, the New Jersey Health Curriculum. And I would like to read a quote from Governor Murphy. "There's some sort of sense that parents have no say." And I would just say emphatically, "Parents deserve absolutely to have a say in this sort of stuff, along with all other interested parties, but probably none more interested than parents." And that's what Governor Murphy said. Just for the record, I'm not a parent, but I was once a kid, you know? Okay. So here's my thoughts on this health curriculum stuff. I think it's essential that we... I don't think you guys have done anything wrong. I think everything you guys said about transparency, about, you know, keeping the parents involved, about making things age-appropriate, that's absolutely wonderful. I think I just want to emphasize a few points, though. First, it's important that that transparency is not at the end. It's one, you know, it's one thing to just create the curriculum and then show it to people, and it's already made, and then people can review it, but it's already too late. If you can keep people involved from the beginning, as it's being worked on and developed, that would be wonderful. So continual transparency. If that, you know, if there's things like surveys... I know Christine Johnson did the survey about the masks, which ended up with a wonderful outcome, showing the wisdom and morality of everyone on the board here. Great. Parental surveys as soon as possible. You know, even information sessions where you can really delve into it. And of course, if possible, it would be wonderful to do opt-in instead of opt-out. Because for an issue this important, if you do opt-in, you're going to make parents read and review the material. Because if you do opt-out, there might be parents who don't fully focus on what's going on in the substance of this health curriculum, and then, you know, just by the nature of opt-out, by default, the kids will be opted in by default when maybe the parents would have preferred to opt them out. So yeah, four major items. If you could please keep people involved with transparency from the very beginning as it's being developed, that's wonderful. If you can have, like, information sessions, that's wonderful. Surveys, that's wonderful. And opt-in instead of opt-out, that would be wonderful. Now to speak on some of the specific items. So I consider myself very progressive in terms of, like, tolerance and gender equality and all that good stuff. I think the objections that people had to the material that was showed on TV, like, you know, that was discussed by national commentators or state commentators, you know, when the NJ Health Curriculum was quoted, the objections people had, it's not because people are transphobic, or homophobic, or sexist, or prudes, although I personally am a prude myself. But that's not the reason they had objections. I think that when it comes to something like, say, gender, there's a lot of people of good faith who really, truly mean well and want equality and tolerance, but they don't necessarily agree with kind of the postmodern framing of gender that is controversial across the political aisle, truth be told. The idea that, you know, someone, especially someone young, that the fact that they don't conform to their gender might lead to physical intervention on young kids, things like that, which I'm not saying, I'm not trying to say what's right or wrong on that. I'm just trying to say, there are legitimate concerns regarding issues around gender identity or some of the other, you know, topics that are in good faith, and they're not like reaction, they're not people just being reactionary or being prudes, although I personally am a prude myself. They're legitimate, and they come from a good place, and they're not about hate, they're not about intolerance. They're not even illiberal. They're liberal by 10 years ago standards, right? Or five years ago standards liberal. And I just really want to emphasize that. So please, any way that you can keep people involved and transparent and looped in from the very, very beginning, things like that, wonderful. Information sessions, wonderful.
30 seconds?
30 seconds. Surveys, wonderful. Opt-in instead of opt-out, wonderful. I once read a psychology book that said the whole point of having an opt-out system is that you're going to get a bunch of people just doing it by default. But you really want them to learn and engage, because this is so important. By the way, you guys have done nothing wrong. You're wonderful. I praised your morality and wisdom, particularly on the mask issue. And yeah, once again, everyone should see the Hoboken High School plays and not see Mile Square Theater. Amen. Thank you. You guys are great and wonderful. I have no objections. I'm just giving you guys advice.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Good evening. Good evening, School Board. My name is Kevin Davis of 1031 Clinton Street here in Hoboken. On the topic of the referendum survey, there's some things I liked, some things I didn't like, and some thoughts I have moving forward. But overall, I think it was a positive development. In terms of things I like, I like that you guys actually had a survey. Instead of just assuming, "Oh, I talked to everyone in the community. I know what they want." You put something together, you sent it out, and people said what they thought. And in fact, it was, I liked that it was a large sample size of 1,200 people responding. You know, obviously, there's a ton of people in Hoboken, but, you know, something that large, you can get some statistical significance if you filter down the results. Because it was a Google survey, so it's automatically in a spreadsheet, which is one of the good things about looking at the data from it. And that, from that survey, you got strong qualitative comments of what people thought. So it wasn't just checking off a box. People wrote what they want. Sometimes people had a little bit too much hyperbole. I tried not to be one of those. And I think, you know, most people had something constructive to say, even if they were upset. Now, for the things that I did not like. I thought the survey design, I think it assumes that people voted "no" because they're concerned about money, and that requested too much personal information. That, you know, certainly have to do something to make sure that people don't spam it and then, you know, sign up, you know, 20 times to put their response in the way the survey. But you certainly, you know, didn't need to know, you know, someone's email address, or, you know, if they had, how old they were, if they had kids. Although, you know, it was somewhat useful, but it may have scared some people off. It didn't scare me off. I put myself out there. And that, in terms, and this, you know, wasn't your fault, in terms of the people who actually responded to the survey, owners and parents were overrepresented based on their share of the population or of the share of people that vote. In fact, from the latest 2021 census estimates, only 34.6% of housing is owner-occupied in Hoboken versus the 80% of respondents that are homeowners from the survey. So, moving forward, I think if you're going to glean conclusions about the exact numbers from the survey, you should take it from a grain of salt due to the lopsided nature of the respondents. So you should weigh each group rather than look at the numbers as a whole. So figure out what percentage of people who vote, or, you know, do an estimate, are homeowners, and then weigh the owner percentage versus that. Like, for example, if we had a friend up there who's wearing his Florida shirt. If you're doing a political poll of Florida, and 70% of the people that respond are Republicans, but Florida's a swing state, you're going to weigh those responses 50% rather than 70%. And then continue to engage the public. And then also, you know, I was able to get a lot of this information because someone did an Oprah request from the survey. So from that Oprah request, I got the raw data, you know, which I put online. And that, you know, from that, you can put filters in and look through it some more. It didn't list the people's email address. It just said what their responses were. And then, you know, you can, you know, post that with the press release saying, "If you want to look at the data, you know, here it is. Here's a link." And then, you know, I think, you know, during the heated campaign, one of the arguments from people that were opposed to the referendum was if we vote "no," the next time, we can get community involvement. Some people said, "You know, there's certain things you can't be public with." And I think, you know, this is proof that...
30 seconds.
All right, only a 30 seconds. This is proof that there is a way of community involvement. I have more to say in 30 seconds, but my time's going to be up, so think about that.
Thank you. Mr. Sokol?
Hello, everyone. My name is Pavel Sokolov. I live at 12th Park for the last 10 years. So first off, I want to thank everyone for the survey. I agree that it was well put together. I got the raw data a couple days ago. I think the Oprah came in like yesterday or two days ago. So I had a lot of fun kind of parsing the qualitative data. I think it was a great step in the right direction to get that community involvement and engagement, definitely. I think there was a lot to learn from the responses from the townspeople, both from the vote "no" and vote "yes" responses. I think there was a lot of common overlap, where I read that even a lot of the vote "yes" people were a little hesitant on their vote because, you know, that there were concerns about the timing of the election, the process, what have you. So this entire process with the survey, the town hall we just had, and the ongoing steps was really a great step in the right direction. And I think will go a long way to swage a lot of concerns. For me, I think it's important to really use the euphemism to, you know, bring a horse to water. What you mentioned in the press release regarding the survey results, I think it's important to kind of connect the dots for the townspeople that, yes, there is a need for more facilities. There's a need for elementary, middle, high school space, for 21st-century education. But it's very hard for people who don't have students in the district, perhaps are private or charter parents, to really see that firsthand. This is not a reflection on the board. This is just a sentiment across the country right now, where there's a lot more, I guess, antagonism or a lack of faith between elected officials and regular people. And this, again, has nothing to do with you as individuals specifically, but just, you know, the sentiment, what we see in Trenton and Washington for the last couple of years. So people are naturally a little bit more hesitant, unknown. And again, not to cast umbrage on everyone, but there's like 10 of us here. And again, this is a very important topic that we had high turnout for. People really should care and be involved. And again, it's, you know, difficult. So giving more people those opportunities and kind of explaining to them. So these are the issues. This is why they're important, and this is why we need a path forward. Kind of drawing on a similar experience, I was at last month's meeting about the budget hearing. And I was really impressed how there was really an explanation of it. This is the situation. This is the cost drivers. This is the budget gap due to Trenton failing to fund us, the allocation of the charter schools. And then a proposal of three different budget scenarios and kind of an explanation of, all right, in A scenario, this was the funding we need, and this was what we're going to have, B, and C, et cetera. I believe the city council kind of had something similar last week. I went to a meeting where they were talking about the northwest development, and they kind of gave a cost breakdown of several different options. So kind of leading people to the conclusion you want them. It's necessarily, sometimes they might not come to the same conclusion with the same facts, but it's really, really important. So I'm really hopeful we're all going to be involved in that process. And furthermore, I do want to specify that as someone who was obviously very involved with the vote "no," there really did seem like a very sincere fear and panic for the people who live around Columbus Park and those condominium associations. And really, I don't know how many of you have been involved in, you know, consistent political campaigning, but finding volunteers to go door-to-door for anything is ridiculously impossible difficult. Kevin and I can attest, you know, it was pulling teeth. But those people were incredibly motivated, to the point where they were telling us, like, "Hey, you should be organizing more canvassing. We want to knock on doors." You really need to talk to them, figure out what to do with the situation, and where to construct if you're going to construct. Because, and I mean, this is not an exaggeration. For them, they perceive it as a life-or-death situation, where their livelihoods are threatened because in their situation, their value, their condominiums are off, mortgage is going to go down, putting them underwater, while at the same time, a corresponding tax increase will make it more difficult for them to sell. So from their perspective, we all know our life savings are gone. And you're really going to have to push to figure out how to resolve that issue because even, let's say, like, I move out of town. Regardless of whether I'm here or not, those people are going to be incredibly passionate and motivated every time a bond situation will come up, if that's high schools built in that specific location. Which, again, I'm not saying, you know, that's an impossibility, but that is something that has to be really concretely addressed as like a first-things-first situation. And overall, regarding the budget that's coming up next month, any possible future bonds, I'm personally not against tax increases just to be, you know, taxes are evil. Rather, it has to be a value proposition, you know, explain why we need this, why each element, not, you know, line by line, but in the aggregate are important and really help people understand. Because unlike Councilwoman Jabor, I'll wrap up. I do believe that if we had a longer runway for this, as many people pointed out in the survey, it probably would have actually done better than worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know her name. Good evening. With respect to the board, I went over to tell her I wanted to sign up for the public portion. With that being said, normally, it's in reach of the public. I'm just explaining, because I don't want to interrupt. It would be out until the meeting is continued. That's why I didn't sign. And I went and brought it to the young lady's attention. Pat Waiters, is any, am I cutting in front of anybody? Okay, so I'm the end of the list? Hadn't it been here tonight, I would have signed it. Okay, so I'm not disrespecting anyone. Pat Waiters, 1219 Willow. Um, I'm basically here tonight, too, because I came to work yesterday, Monday. Anyway, Stevens Institute professor for 50 years, he's retired now. He left a letter for me, and he questioned me on a few things, and he said to me, "I spoke with Mr. Clumpford, and I want to thank you, Tom, for entertaining him because he have a phenomenal idea with respect to helping our kids with tutoring." And I don't know if you remember Mr. Hung, Horing, Horing? He said, "Just remember boring." And he said he spoke at the meeting, and he asked me for stats, and I told him, "I'll give you stats." When I emailed him the milk crates of things I got organized home, and I can't make this up. So he said, "I've been a teacher, a professor for 55 years. I'm retired." But he didn't tell me he was 90 years old until the end hour conversation. And I spoke to him, and I told him, "It takes a lot for me." So I basically speak and conversate, giving you the condensed version. And it seemed like I took forever, and he goes, "Well, I'm 90 years old." I said, "Oh, my God. I'm so sorry, sir." But he wanted me to bring this to the board again. So I ran past him, and I said, "I have a quick question for you." You see the Supreme Court justice, they was getting ready to swear her in, and everybody questioned her about critical race theory. And I have questioned this board about critical race theory. Not prior to an election, not prior to me running, not, I don't do the whole election grandstanding. And he said to me, "I know you've been running 15 years, and I've been voting for you each and every year. And it makes me feel real good, and conversations and drop-off letters at my job like that makes me feel good." Living in this city like I told him since the 50s, my family moved here in the 50s. I'm very involved. I don't have to play politics or nothing else. But I feel so good when people, when I'm confronted to say, "Patricia, I know you have a deep passion for what you do. You have a deep passion when you run for office, and I will always support and vote for you." So I don't like politics, and I tell y'all all the time, "Don't bring politics in people's education. Don't bring politics into this board of ed." So when people come to me and confront me and ask me... So when people come to me and confront me and ask me, what is my opinion, and that's what I give them, because I own my opinion, my opinion, but it's also tagged with facts. I had everything, every experience that black people experienced with this Board for years, going way back with Ms. Gilliard when there was no black representation. And seem like rewind years and centuries later, that they find every excuse they can, under every rock. You got your city council for years, you could say it's not, but it is, very political. Emily Jabor, them sitting here, Jason Freeman, every election. And then you guys say, oh no, it's not politics. That would get me, I mean, really emotional. That'd make my emotions hit the roof, because it is political. And when the last ticket ran unopposed, that was horrible. Y'all don't want to debate no more, you don't want anything no more. But I'm here tonight to say this, people want answers, and it ain't going to disappear. We seeing what's happening all around America with respect to critical race theory. And I tell the city council that, and I'm telling this Board tonight, it ain't going to disappear. I'm going to wait again, all of y'all got my information, to reach out to me the same way that young man did, and let's start a dialogue on critical race theory. My people deserve to know where we've been, so we can know where we're going. I don't care what systemic racism issues and stuff Hoboken had in the past, okay, it got to stop. I don't want to hear diversity at election time, and it's no diversity. I'm not impressed, because I'm going to run each and every time there's a seat become available. But I expect you guys to sit in them seats tonight to reach out to me, and let's start a dialogue with critical race theory. And let's entertain Mr. Horin, and get back in touch with him, he couldn't come tonight, he had a doctor's appointment, and I think that's a great idea, and he's not asking for little than nothing, chicken seeds, and he got the key to our kids' failing future. Why our kids fail, he had it down pat. If we had a tutor, not a tutor, with 30 kids in a class with one tutor, and they're getting discouraged, just open your, closing saying this, open your hearts, minds, and souls, and entertain Mr. Horin, please. Thank you.
And now we will be going into executive session for the purpose of anticipated litigation and matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will be going into executive session for matters on anticipated litigation and those covered by attorney-client privilege. We will be taking, we will not be taking action, so just be coming back to close the meeting, and we will be approximately 30 minutes or so. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Deliara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Sekarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, it is now 9:18, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second. And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.